Good evening. I would like to call to order our March 11th regularly scheduled town council meeting. Welcome everyone that is with us in council chambers as well as those joining us via Zoom. We'll move right into our agenda with our adoption. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as presented this evening? It's a motion to approve by Councilwoman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Great motion plus carry. At this time, we will ask Councilman Goodman to be at his end of the hour this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the court this afternoon we've had today. Just thank you for the many blessings that you bore out over us and over this town. And just ask that you be with us this evening as we go through the agenda tonight and just help us to make great decisions to enhance all the residents of Harrisburg. We just pray all these things from Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. On your behalf, and with the great soul of the great and just for all. First up this evening, we do have some special presentation. Mallory will be joining us on the discussion of the solid waste contract where they will welcome Mallory.
Good evening, Mayor. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Council. So as stated, I'm going to be presenting some considerations for the waste management contract that's coming up. Currently, our under contract with Waste Pro and that contract expires in June. We pay about $100,000 a month right now for garbage and recycling, which includes trash and bulk pickup every single week, recycling every other week, and they administer the carts. A couple other things in our contract that are going to be unchanged are provision of court bodies for our events. They service all of our municipal dumpsters and they also provide pickup for HOA pool houses and things like that. So we've been analyzing the best approach for waste management, including looking at self-performing it. We do yard waste in-house, so we looked at what it would take to go in-house with all of our solid wastes. I'll talk about that a little bit. And then we also went through the request for proposal process with waste management companies, just anticipating this bid, this contract expiring, and we received bids from two qualified bidders. So I'm going to kind of quickly go over the bid results from that RFP. We advertised in November 2023 and we bid in January 2024. We had, we did not open that, I said we opened bids, we were going to open bids in January 2024. We only had two qualified bidders, so we re-advertised, still only had two qualified bidders, which is to be expected with the industry here where we are. So I wanted to just point out how the bid results went overall. So on the screen before you, you have the current contract value at 1.25 million. And then the last four columns, the Waste Pro contract, we bid it with two options, with them providing carts and with the town administering carts. So as you can see, Waste Pro providing carts came in about 1.6 million and Republic providing carts just over 2.5 million. So easy choice to continue with Waste Pro, but how do we move forward with Waste Pro is what we're going to talk about tonight. So I'll draw your attention to these three numbers. I inflated our current contract value based on the CPI, the Consumer Pricing Index, which is 5%. So we're, we know we're going to go up 5% this year, whether we were to stay with the current contract or not. Waste Pro providing carts this year would have taken us up another 25%, so nearly 30. And then if they don't provide carts, we would still see a 7% increase in the contract, so 2% above the CPI. What led to those price increases? So the unit price increases that we saw, we saw recycling costs go up 50% across the board and then the bulk pickup rates nearly doubling. And then just to give you an idea of the total contract value, and this is the same regardless of which contractor, but our current contractor, the Waste Pro contract, the solid waste is basically 60% of the contract value, recycling about a third, the bulk items 10%, and then the HOA is just barely 1%. So I talked earlier in my presentation about looking at bringing things, bringing the service in-house. So what would that mean for the town? So our current contract with Waste Pro is about 1.2 million. They're administering carts. We find the quality of service to be acceptable, but the contract does expire in June. If we were to move this to be in-house, we're estimating about $2.5 million a year to self-perform. And that $2.5 million is amortished over a 10-year period with the purchase of equipment and parts additionally. There's a lot of upfront cost to that, but I try to phase them over time to get an even number. A lot of upfront investment in equipment and staffing, we, if we estimated, we would need five to seven full-time staff added just to do that in-house. And then we may not be able to improve the quality of service that much above what Waste Pro has. We know that from a minimum, our customer service response could be better, but as far as delays at the landfill, we really have no control over that, just as much control as Waste Pro does. And then landfill considerations, if we do bring this in-house, what sort of, what sort of implications are we looking at over time? Should the landfill eventually close, we move to Almaral? Those are things that we took into consideration as well. So we looked at an in-house cart administration, so the town purchasing the carts, but still continuing to partnership with Waste Pro throughout the service. The contract would increase to $1.35 million per year. We would be administering the carts, the upfront costs, but we would see a savings over the long run, which I'll get into in the next slide. And then we think that with that service, we could significantly improve the service, much faster response on getting carts to customers when they need a replacement. It would be our customer service, which has a great reputation. So overall, we do feel that we can improve the service in that area. Looking at the cart pricing, this, this graph kind of shocked me when I looked at the numbers, but the lines represent cost over time. So at year 15, with a Waste Pro contract, we would, with Waste Pro providing carts, we would be looking at $4.5 million in cart pricing a month. At year 15, with the town purchasing and providing the carts, we're just over 2 million. So that break even point is right before the five-year, which makes sense because we'd be entering a five-year contract with Waste Pro. They want to make sure that they get their money back before the contract expires. The chart also accounts for replacement. It also doesn't account for new carts, so I try to keep the apples to apples. The initial investment upfront is just over a million dollars, but saves about a little over 2 million over time. So I next up, have a discussion with council, propose these budget increases for the management of the town's solid waste. I'm working on a request for proposals for carts, so we can get very specific numbers on what the carts will cost, make sure we make the right decision on that front, negotiating the contract with Waste Pro, and then continue to assess every year whether or not we would move things fully in-house. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mallory, I do have one question just based on a article that I'd read two weeks ago. Some municipalities are moving away from the recycling, just because it's been kind of a big myth that we're not really truly recycling and everything else. What would that save us and is that even a consideration?
It would save us 400, 500,000 a year in recycling costs in our contract. So it was about a third of our contract value, but it would cost us the, maybe a couple of the, it would, it would probably increase our solid waste costs, such as garbage costs, if there was more volume going in the, in the carts. Rob, you want to jump in on that? We talked, we talked about this being a potential question.
Yeah, we, we've talked about this and from a, from a staff standpoint, we really can't, we can't verify or dispute the articles that we see out there. I, I think there is validity that they have, depending on who the carrier is, that the vast majority of recyclable material, they go to a landfill, right? They take very, if they even get slightly contaminated, I think the term, Mallory, is if there's one thing, even the entire car, then a whole thing goes to the landfill, right? So you don't rinse out one can, then they landfill the entire thing. So that leads to a lot of recyclables that end up in the, in landfill. But I think it's just that it's a community choice, the council choice in the community of, my take is that the community kind of demands high service recycling. It would be a pretty large barrier for us as a staff to overcome, to really communicate out to the, to the residents that recycling isn't worth the cost that we, we do it. But it is, it's not cheap. You heard Mallory say, half a million dollars a year, depending on the tax rate, goes towards recycling that may not be recycled. So I, I think that is a significant cost, but it is also something that we do passionately as a town. We've seen our sustainability, work members pushing this in the past. Most of our residents that call in ask for more recycling, trash pickups, but again, I think it's a policy decision, not necessarily public works.
Have we seen any North Carolina municipalities step back from?
I think Greenville, South Carolina, in a way with recycling. When we started this process over a year ago, we met with a solid waste provider, they provided the equipment and carts and everything. That was, it is the same, same thing that you said, mentioned, that municipalities are moving away from it unfortunately, but one thing I think that we have going for us as a town is just the communication. We, you know, every year hit really hard on what can go in recycling and what can't. So I have people that tell me, you know, this is Aunt Double, but I have people that told me, I didn't know, I couldn't recycle that, but now I know because I saw something on Harrisburg website or whatever. So I think there's, I think that we're doing a good job educating on how to recycle. And the Sustainability Advisory Board obviously has carried that into all of our boards, and just the town with their legacy. So I, I think we, I, I think we keep it, if you're asking me today, but you know, obviously we could continue to evaluate the effectiveness of it and if there's anything smarter to do there. And I, I think that needs to be turned, but the municipalities are looking at, and it's unfortunate that they're doing the way.
I think we see much more hesitance getting into recycling than people. So those that are in it are kind of, are in it, but I, I don't, I, I see less and less getting into it than aren't.
Thank you.
I think my dealings with any complaints have always been driven around needing a cart replacement, not necessarily a pickup. I think we've had one or two pickup ones that we've worked through, but it's that, generally speaking, the most complaints we get is cart replacement.
I would say missed pickup in carts. So the, the missed pickup is, and we've been working really closely with Waste Pro on the app that we use, our apology, to make sure that if there is a missed pickup, there's a push notification going out to anybody that signed up for it. That's been really helpful. And then as, as far as the carts, you know, if you call our customer service, we're calling Waste Pro's customer service. So there's just a lag there where I think we could administer it much better if you call our customer service directly and we were the ones handling it from, from cradle to grave. So I think we could do a better job there than what Waste Pro is doing, not spud them down, but just we have solid customer service. We could do that.
Question I have is, I'm sure Waste Pro doesn't provide the carts at cost. I'm sure there's some additional revenue built in. So if we pull carts away from them, do you anticipate the rest of the contract to go up higher?
No, they, they provide, I'm sorry, I mean, they provide it. We asked, we anticipated that in this contract. So Mallory RFP for both with and without carts. Our current contract obviously has with carts. We have the 1.25, which is now Waste Pro with carts, which is our only other option of someone providing, providing carts, which is the 1.6. And then Waste Pro without carts is the 1.34. So they actually gave us a very competitive rate without the carts. I think they charge us, you know, almost $2, about $1.80 a month per car, per household. And that's where that interpolates over the Mallory's graph of that cart pays for itself in about four and a half to five years. So we wanted to get this in front of you today, wanted to really show that even without, even, even including CPI increases, which we've absorbed as part of our contract for the last three years, which were like 4%, 9%, 3.5%. There's still a 25% increase over and above CPI based on the low bid. And the only thing we could do to try to mitigate any of that was, can we take an upfront investment in carts? Now that's an additional maintenance responsibility on our staff too, right? We've got to deliver these carts, we've got to replace them, we've got to, to order them. And that's a lot more expensive in year one, but by year five, six, these are supposed to be 15 carts and not only is that, but theoretically, if we get, let's say 12 years out of these, it is a cost savings over the long term. But it's a significant 1.2 million dollar investment. So we're still, we're still looking at, at what that actual number is, but I didn't want to spring this on the council or you not to know, we're working on it. And come May or June, in the middle of the revow budget, we're like, okay, now we have this million dollar question on the table. So at a minimum, we'll be budgeting for that extra 400,000 that is the low bid above and beyond next year. And we may be able to capitalize the carts and do that over time, which we make us have another 100,000, maybe instead of 400,000 a year that is capitalized for the carts and save some money.
Was this baked into the numbers that you guys shared with us or this?
Before, breaking, breaking news. Yes. Yeah, this is a new bid opening that, with a contract that's tied to CPI, we do expect to be a little closer. But even with CPI, you can see the bids are, it's, it's, I think, a 12% increase to get rid of carts. We just have to pick up trash in our own carts compared to what we're doing with the old contract, five carts.
And I know the bid process is the bid process, but do we know what the other municipalities around here are doing? And is there any halo effect, including, well, you're already doing Kannapolis and Concord?
Okay.
I've spoken in depth with other municipalities, most use Waste Pro or Republic. So those are kind of the two options in our area. Concord moved to fully in-house. I think that there's a size of the municipality where it makes sense to bring it in-house, but we're just not quite there yet. But we, we are going to have a meeting with Republic to get an understanding of why their pricing was so high. It was just something that we would typically do after a bid where there was a, a low number of bidders and a huge spread, like what we saw on this bid. Other municipalities are seeing higher prices for their trash flushing and recycling because they're further from the landfill. So we do see sound economy on that, so maybe one perk. But overall, the folks that are using Waste Pro, the public districters that are using Waste Pro, they're happy with the service and.
And we should check in with Concord in a couple of years to see how it's going.
How's it going?
Yeah. Chief bless.
Yeah, but I, I think the bottom line takeaway on this is, you know, Mallory did an excellent job of comparing prices across the different options. There, there really isn't a, a second closest low option. It's two and a half million for us to do it, about two and a half million for Republic to do it, and about 1.6 for Waste Pro.
And how does that work with our, I think we're going to get more houses over the next couple of years. Is there elasticity in their pricing or is it flat rate or is per household or how does that work?
It's pretty flat rate per household and then subject to the CPI price increase every year. So if we added more, it wouldn't necessarily make the dollar per household go down.
Theoretically, they're paying for it with the, with the tax rate.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Mallory? Any for thought? Trashy.
The trash laying hat is not my favorite hat. I will wear it gladly. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into public comments. Janet, I think I don't have the sheet in front of me, but nobody has done one to speak. Is there anybody in person that would like to speak? If Sophia will just come up to the front and state her name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jeremiah Warper, 613 Auto Drive in Harrisburg. I thought I was going to be here earlier in Spanish. I was informed at 5:50 that I was coming here. So my wife had questions and that's why I'm here. I want to start off by just thanking everybody on board who've taken the time to talk with not only my wife, Katie, but myself for, for things that are going on and around here and help clarify a lot of things. But I got nothing but positive feedback for y'all. But one thing I'd like to bring up is a potential issue on the horizon. I know that as Harrisburg grows, there's going to be a lot of things that come up. Transportation network's changing is a big thing, not only affects the small community, but, but the larger picture for how traffic gets through here. One of the, the swirl is around parallel drive and woodside drive and what's coming through on that. We're, we're very close to that. If I was better at golf, I'd say golf balls reach, but the woodside drive extension is the one we talked about extending out to the neighborhood with a roundabout. That's just what we've heard. I haven't seen anything on paper. There hasn't been a lot of communication. So with, with that, as we're one household and there's probably, you know, 50 or 60 around us. So then it becomes this swirl, you know, we'll call on rumors. And they'd always focus on the negative part of it, right? How it's going to impact and how it's not going to work out. You know, they talk about the impacts and negative stuff, really just due to lack of communication. I know there's a process that's in place, right? But the bigger thing is people in the area, they've been there 20, 30, 40 years. We're fortunate. I mean, we, we were lucky to move in the last two or three years. We get our information online, you know, we get a lot of emails. There's a lot that need like a, a physical piece to look at, right? Everybody who can hear things, that's one, but if you can see on paper and know how it's going, that helps out a lot and reduces the swirl on that. So that was really all I had.
Jeremiah, appreciate you for your patch. We won't be, if there's anyone online.
I can add some flavor to that since you got told to come here. We'd be high and dry. But I will say, you know, we do have a grant application in for the roundabout at Maine and Roberta with a stud that goes towards Woodside, but that's the extent of it at this point. Now, there is a stud that comes, Woodside is actually when the, when the neighborhood is built there, was intended to stud out to Roberta, but just as far as that neighborhood went. So there is a little gap there after it gets out of the neighborhood. And it, it's always been contemplated at some point that that'll connect out. When that happens, I mean, 10 years ago, people were worried about it and 20 years ago, people were worried about it. I do think eventually it's the town's goal from a transportation network to have what we refer to as old Harrisburg, the neighborhood, have pedestrian access and availability to get into town center. There's been some, some discussions about do we locate a new county library there, a new senior center at that location, and really make this all, you know, walkable and tied together. So there isn't anything concrete now and I would hate to, you know, draw up a theoretical and get neighbors all, all stirred up saying, when is this happening when, when there isn't anything concrete? I think certainly if we were to get the grant funding for the roundabout, that our next step with them would be start, start looking at other connections, meeting with the neighbors, thinking about what other traffic improvements we, we'd need to go into place in order to make that something that is good both for the whole town and for the local neighbors that would be impacted by it. So certainly feel free to reach out. We'd be happy to fill in on anything that we have. But a lot of times, I think sometimes these conversations start to build and start to build when you're looking for something that might not be there yet. But that's all right. That's the business that, that we're in. So we'd be happy to meet further with you or any neighbors out there if you have any concerns.
Thank you, Rob. Is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to make public comments? Just raise your hand. It's the raise hand feature. Not see anybody up ahead. With that, public comments is closed this evening. Moving right along to our consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Great motion there.
Smith, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. We will move into our communications. And first up, our town manager before.
We, Mayor Council, a couple of quick updates and reminders for this evening. And I'll keep most of it around the budget. That's what everybody is going through right now. So I'll focus on that. Our next meeting on the 23rd is our operational draft one budget, eight-hour meetings. So we'll, we'll break that into departments throughout the day, encourage the public to come out to those and to participate. We will again have public comment in those for anybody wishing to speak on anything, be it operation, capital, revowals. I want to point out as well, I guess, to the community mostly, that we encourage you to come to those, advocate for the things that you're passionate about, right? And, and not just in revowling years, but all years. We don't do this every four years. We do it every year. So if you're passionate about transportation improvements, come to those budget meetings. If you're passionate about parks or greenways, that's, that's where we make those decisions. If you're passionate about funding, taxes, come to those meetings. And, and every year, that's really, you know, where we're able to roll up our sleeves, look at things critically, attack things like our solid waste contract and how do we fund something like that? How do we account for it? Increase year over year on something and make sure that we're doing the will of people. So again, the next big one, I encourage folks to come out. That would be our, our full day operational budget. And it's a great bonding experience for, for anyone that will also be on Zoom, for anyone wanting to tune in at home and check it later. We will also have at least primary data up on the budget 101 website about early next week. So people can see the data and documentation that we're doing in these, in these budgets. And we'll continue to add to that throughout the process. And I would also caution folks that, like we saw tonight, we are still early in the process. We will not adopt a budget until June. And we will be working on that budget and getting everything right, right up until the last minute. There are still appeals going on for folks on the revow side. So that will be an ongoing process. We will continue to work with council to look at our capital projects, staffing, some long-term policy issues right up until that, that June begins. So May and June, things will get a lot more solid, but we'll be working through March and April through several meetings. And we just encourage members of the public to reach out this way, to come to those meetings, and also just send an email to council, send an email myself. And we'd love to clarify anything that, that we may not clarify fully in a meeting. It is difficult in these meetings to speak to an audience that's so varied. We have some folks who are professional economists that live in our community, and we have some folks that have been here 50 years and they're a plumber and they don't understand certain things. If you say it in a lame economist would understand, economist doesn't understand it if we say it in a lame term. So if we need clarification, I would just encourage everyone to please, you know, reach out to me, reach out to the council, reach out to Lee and Brian, my CPAs, who also speak a different language, a professional engineer, and we'll do our best to make sure everybody has everything that they need and that we're providing as much data, as much transparency and much, as much understanding throughout the budget process possible. I'll leave it at that. My mayor, there will take any questions if there are any. Before our budget meeting on the 23rd.
Any questions for Rob? Thank you, Rob. Next up, we have our finance manager, Brian Lee, with finance manager before. Next up, we have our finance manager, Brian Lee, with the finance department report.
Any questions? The financial report is at the end of February. And we're two thirds of the way through the fiscal year. And as you can see, to the top section here for our operational revenues, tax collections have reached ninety seven percent for the fiscal year. So we're in wonderful shape on property taxes. We have a couple of months left of motor vehicle taxes to collect, but that is it for the year. So very happy with the performance there. The general fund in total, which is mostly supported by tax collections, is at ninety percent. So also in really good shape. The water and sewer fund and stormwater fund are at sixty seven and sixty six percent so far in fiscal year. So both on target there as well. Departmental expenditures over operations for the general government departments are shown at the bottom here. You can see they're all in green, ranging from thirty nine to around sixty seven percent. So no budgetary concerns across these departments. And the same story across the remaining general fund departments and both the enterprise funds. We're in that same range from the upper thirties into the sixties there. Salaries across the town are up ten percent this month to sixty two percent. So five percent off of the target at this point in the fiscal year. No budgetary concerns across any operations or salaries across the town. This will look at the facilities and infrastructure, single year projects that we have going right now. But the first one I'd draw your attention to is the storage building at fire station number one. It's at seventy five percent complete. That building has been delivered and installed and interior upvending is currently underway. It should be placed in service this month. The second is the Greenway Design Construction at the Bloom Neighborhood. It's about thirty percent complete. Clearing, grading and storm drainage has all been completed there. And paving will begin once weather permits this month. The next is the ADA sidewalk program. Mentioned this a few times. Town Center and Rocky River Crossing have now been fully completed. And staff is currently identifying areas for improvement in Heatherstone Neighborhood, as well as along Morehead, Roberta and Morris Drive to finish that project up for the year. And lastly, the pond improvements at Harrisburg Park. That construction contract was approved at last month's meeting and construction is set to begin this month on that. Here are our multi-year projects that are in design. So not too much movement this month. On this slide here, you can see it's mostly the same from last month. All the projects here are still obtaining easements before we move it to construction. So we'll provide updates as those are successful and we can convert these projects over to the construction phase. And speaking of the construction phase, here are those projects. And the first one here is the Highway forty nine corridor plan, phase one. That's at about nine percent complete. The construction contract is on the consent agenda tonight. And just as a reminder to everybody, that project link runs the left turn lane on forty nine onto Roberta. And then also adds the financial way to extension from town center into the food line shopping center. And lastly, the sidewalks on Sarans Road, phase one, have been moved to a hundred percent complete. All the work is done there, including all the touch up and landscaping work. Here's a look at the equipment projects for the year. About fifty percent done with all the equipment projects across the town. And we have movement on this block of four projects here for the fire department. There are two at ninety five percent. And those items have been received. They're being upped and will be placed in service this month. And then we have two showing at fifty percent complete. And those were recently ordered. And so when received, it'll be the same story of getting those upped and placed into service as quickly as we can. Here's a look at our vehicle projects. We're starting to see a little bit more progress on these as we make our way through the year. We have four highlighted ones here in administration, fire, environmental protection and water and sewer. All those vehicles have been received and as much like the equipment and some of the other items, they're being upped and will be placed in service this month. I wanted to point out the freightliner dump truck for the water and sewer department that's at fifty percent complete. This was approved at last month's meeting and has been ordered. But as a reminder, it has a very lengthy build schedule that will work our way through about the next year. And then lastly, we have three vehicles that were moved to complete. They're showing at a hundred percent on this. And that is where the replacement vehicles for engineering, water sewer and the stormwater street sweeper. So those are all in in service. Here are our professional services projects for the year. The first one is the strategic economic development plan. It's about seventy five percent complete. Last month, we approved to expand the scope of that contract and bring in public involvement. That was completed towards the end of the month. And we are still on track to have the final report presented to council in April. And then I just wanted to point out that we had the water model and CIP engineering services also on last month's meeting. Those are showing decreases in budget utilization as well as progress because we expanded the scope, expanded the cost of those projects. But those were funded with the four hundred thousand dollar grant. Other updates in finance, I'm just showing you the budget calendar here for the remaining part of the twenty twenty five budget season. As Rob mentioned, on the twenty third, we have an all day workshop for draft one. On April eighteenth, we have managers recommend a budget preview, which is a fully balanced budget. And then our two council meeting items for the presentation in public here in May. And again, another presentation as well as consideration for adoption at the June meeting. We have identified a use for all the ARPA funds that will get adopted as part of the budget. And you still have the chance to modify that or get some more input into that as we work our way through budget season. But as we decided in the last budget workshop, we do have a direction to go. And so if there are no other changes to that, we will have appropriated all the funds by the required time. So also wanted to go into budget billing as that will be available for everyone tomorrow morning. So budget billing helps our residents confidently manage their monthly water sewer and stormwater bill by having a set amount each month. You're probably familiar seeing this with Duke Energy and Dominion Energy and whoever else they may have providing one of your utilities. The benefit again is just that one monthly bill that doesn't change throughout the year. We are hoping that that helps provide a little confidence in knowing what your bill amount, what your payment amount is going to be. And that will provide that confidence to sign up for bank draft, the freeway to make that payment each month. And with those two combined, there is no need to remember when or how much to pay. We just take care of that for you and we'll settle up at the end of the year. So we're hoping those will go hand in hand. Again, budget billing with auto draft ensures that you will never have a late fee or account delinquency fee. And even if you have a major issue like a leak, you continue on with the budget billing program. And we get the chance to work out the details of the leak and give you your credit back without impacting what's due. So it can be a very beneficial program for our residents. Enrollment in the program is very easy. You'll apply online as long as you have a six month history with the town. That's what will base your payment off of. The start date will be the month following your enrollment. So we'll get you signed up right away. The settle up month is twelve months after enrollment. And you will just communicate with customer service once you've filed your application online. That customer service will contact you and confirm your payment amount and get you all signed up unless you know what it's going to look like. So it should be a very easy process. Here's a shot of our website. In the bottom, bottom right section there, you can see the budget billing tab. That's been added to the customer service page. So navigating our website, you go to government, customer service and online bill pay. That's where you see the budget billing option. And on that tab is this information all about the program here. So we have what is budget billing, how it works, steps to enroll, including the form to click on there and frequently asked questions as well. So all you can need to know about budget billing program is right there on the website. And when you click on that link to go to the enrollment form, it's a very simple form. It is secure. You have the option of adding your bank draft information there, but it's not required. So but of course, we do encourage that. But as you can see, it's very simple, name, address, phone number. That gives us what we need to get back in contact with you and you're enrolled in the program. This is a view of what the bill looks like. And I've got another slide where it's using a little bit more. But you can see there next to the graph, there's an AMP that tells you that you're in the program. And that will tell you whether you have a surplus or a deficit as we get throughout the year. And then if you can see under the current bill, there is an AMP adjustment. And that's average monthly payment, by the way. So that gets added or deducted from your actual usage and produces your agreed upon monthly payment amount. So here's a couple more shots of that. At the top left version shows your AMP excess. So that's if you've overpaid compared to your actual utilization. The one on the right shows someone signing up. This is the first month. You'll see just AMP was at zero balance and the AMP adjustment over there in the current bill due. And the bottom example here shows an AMP shortage of about nine dollars. So that's someone who has agreed upon amount is a little less than what they've actually used. And so that shortage will build up throughout the year if that's the trade that they're they're sticking to throughout the year. So those are the three versions of bills that you'll get as you go through the program. So the last thing is how do we communicate this? Casey's doing a great job of putting together some graphics and she's got the website ready, has the social media and website news flashes ready to launch tomorrow morning. So here's an example of something that you might see on social media. And then we've got a couple more here of just the five steps of signing up and rolling in the program. And these are the types of things that you'll see on social media to try to attract people. And that I will welcome any questions.
Is there the ability to have a quick button when you first pull up the website so you don't have to navigate through?
Yes, that's one of the, I think the first graphic is going to be the news flash that goes across the bottom. And so that'll take you right to that page.
Speeds of use. All of those.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mike?
We're not taking credit cards because of the fee.
We would prefer not to for everyone's benefit. But you can be in budget billing and still pay however you would like. Credit card, cash, check. So it doesn't change your payment method at all.
But.
Whereas if you're willing to get a payment.
Percent on the credit card.
Yes, yeah. And that does pass through to to the resident. So they pay two dollars and fifty cents and then we pay the the two and a half percent charge.
Wow. We budget for that?
We do.
No questions for Mike? Thanks. With that, our law enforcement update, I believe Lieutenant Nash is going to give that for us this evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I told some of y'all that Captain Missburn could be here today. He became grandfather. She'll be a little girl, so I'm hoping that she'll be able to chisel in his heartstone. Since the last meeting, we've been remarkably quiet. There's been no major incidents that we've had. So law enforcement related back to these, we had three thousand and sixty security checks, eighteen eighty, traffic stops, six thirty five, that are not emergency response time. The little red snow siren is six minutes and fifty nine seconds. The only other thing I have to share is within the past few weeks, we moved another deck deeper to our traffic division. So we have two in traffic division now. And we had people going through the field training courtroom for patrol. They're all out. So we're actually full on patrol, which gets set up for the rest of the agency. We need the last and then our two traffic spots are full. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Lieutenant Nash this evening? Yeah, I'll be easy.
I do.
Love it. Well timed. Next up, we have Chief Noah of our fire department at bay.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Report for the month of paperwork from the fire department. Start off with our fire marshal activities. You can see site plan reviews and read for this, did six of those. Consultations for our precincts, seven. Pre-plans, as we've talked about before with our businesses, fourteen of those were scheduled and completed. So pretty busy month for them. Again, about sixty one percent of what they did was just general site. But you can see the other foster cares or COs or consultations. And that's some public education over at high school. They did complete thirty eight inspections last month and eighty three for the year so far. As far as our operational responses, we did respond to two hundred and fifteen incidents in the month of February. And our weathered average response time of a little over four minutes, forty seven seconds. And you can see from the next slide, that did tick up a little bit from the month of January. During the month of February, we did attend a lot of training in our training grounds in station two. So that probably caused that little bit of uptake responding back to our busiest area on this side of the tracks. As far as working fires, we did have one vehicle fire and the other four fires were brush fires. If you remember, we had several days there of warm weather and windy conditions where the people decided it was a good day to burn. It was not a good day to burn. So the major fire was off Lower Rocky River Road. That burned several acres down there, but we were able to not have any structures involved. So a good job of our folks and our mutual. Again, station one continues to be the busiest, followed by two and three. That's pretty typical. Again, most of our incidents were taken care of by just one apparatus responding almost at a percent. And you can see again, station one continued to be the busiest. Anything that starts with a thirty one is station one thirty two is station two and so forth. Again, incident types, most of what we do is rescue or EMS, car accidents, things of that nature. By eighty percent of the time, we were able to handle our incidents on our own. And you can see about seventy percent of the time, we were A was given. Four percent would receive A from other agencies. Again, our heat map, where again, the clusters are on the forty nine corridor. But you can also, you can interpret the map and it's really our neighborhoods where other incidents are taking place. And again, the red dots indicate an area where we're responding to more than one time or more than twice. And we take our model. I think we talked about that. That could be a lifting assistance, getting somebody in post of something like that. Again, I'll break out by zones. Again, use all of that to the left on the chart as it correlates to the map on the right. Couple of updates. We did hire another lateral firefighter who has started. Elijah Bliss came from the city of Salisbury. We did have a whole pretty good sized training. We have about seventy firefighters on our training ground in the city of Charlotte, city of Concord and Harrisburg. Very good event. I think some videos went out. I'm not sure if y'all were able to see those. I'll be glad to share those. But very beneficial. I can tell you in my career, I never thought I would see those three agencies on the same training ground. So that's pretty, it was pretty impressive. And then again, some of you are aware, we did, we're doing a trial period with a new schedule of forty eight ninety six, which means they're working forty eight hours straight and then they're all ninety six hours in four days. Very positive feedback on this schedule so far. Even with our recruiting efforts, we've been able to recruit two folks that wanted to go to this schedule. So we're seeing the benefits from it. I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent. We're probably not going to make everybody happy, but I think it's, I've had several phone calls. I think they're very respectful about it. Calling and said, get used to it. I really like this, you know, like that's four days off. Gives them a penalty. Health back. So so I think it's a good schedule and hopefully we'll get some feedback. We'll provide that management makes the final decisions as we get closer to the end of the trials. That's it? Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Dan.
Just a couple of mayor's comments. I attended the Centralinas Regional Council annual meeting a few weeks ago. And I'm pleased to serve on their consecutive, their executive board for this upcoming year representing Ferris County House. I was on that last year, so happy to do that again. Excited to be part of welcoming a new business to Harrisburg. Several of us attended the ribbon cutting and grand opening of Cookie Company. Not have their cookies, so highly encouraged to try them. They were quite delicious. But this is the first of the franchise on the east coast. So we're very happy that they chose Harrisburg to start and wanted to welcome Cookie Company again to our area. Last Thursday, I along with Mayor Proton Glover and Councilman Fall, attended the North Carolina League of Municipalities Town and State Dinner. It was really a great evening to kind of connect with our local and state representatives. This is usually called in. Um, this is usually called in Raleigh annually, but they have decided to kind of take this dinner on the road and have picked several key cities to spread that out. So Concord was the first location for them to host that. It was very successful. So I think we were good guinea pigs for that. And I think they will continue to do that as well. Um, this Friday, I'm excited to serve on a panel discussion for the Women Leading Piveris Luncheon that's hosted by the Chamber Friday at Rankless Park. Always appreciative of the events the Chamber does in our area. And I did want to remind everyone of the Harrisburg. It's free. This is for Harrisburg area Chamber members. And the upcoming meeting is here in Council Chamber on Thursday, March twenty eighth at eight AM. They still are working on securing a permanent location for that meeting. But they've got lots of Chamber members on in this area. So this is kind of a good hub for them to be able to meet. Um, lastly, I did want to give an update on our vacant council seat. And I just wanted to kind of recap the process that we've gone through thus far. On our budget meeting back on February twenty second, it was discussed and there was some direction given at that point to reach out to those individuals that ran in the most recent election in November. I did reach out individually via email to the top three vote receivers as a starting point. Um, those three candidates have been involved since November, either in person at meetings or joining us via Zoom. So I felt that was a good place to start. Um, I sent those top three potential candidates, Mr. Patrick, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Fan, an email on February twenty eighth, just requesting that they respond by March sixth with their interest and any further consideration. Um, Mr. Patrick and Ms. Anderson responded within the deadline, expressing their interest and appreciation. Um, I've had the opportunity to speak with both of them individually, um, as well as their email correspondence. And both are ready and willing to step in to fulfill those duties for the remaining term of that vacant seat. Um, Mr. Patrick did specifically request that if he is to be considered an appointed, he would like to be part of the remaining budget meetings and processes as opposed to being appointed after. Um, certainly I think either candidate would serve our town well and have the support of the people as reflected in the November election numbers. Um, my recommendation would be to appoint Mr. Patrick to that same seat as he is very familiar with our budget process, our projects that we have. He served four years. He was within thirty eight votes of the fourth seat and would require very minimal staff involvement to bring him up to speed since his department in December, which I think was a concern that we discussed on the twenty third. So with that update, I just wanted to open that up for some council discussions. For further direction.
That, careful what you wish for. So the only thing that I would advocate in this process. Is that we give the community a time to absorb this. I mean, we've all been in it. Um, if we move too hastily, I mean, we're going to live with this decision for the next three years, nine months. Um, that we allow public comment and allow it to get out there. Casey, we'd probably need your help to say this is what we're doing. And have it done with full transparency. So everybody knows our process. And then I think it's important that you could probably advise us on this as to what our options are, you know? Are we to fill this? Are we mandated to fill this? Is this a requirement? Is there a time limit? Is there any provision for special election? And then the other thing I think that would give some context is what we've done in the past. You know, if we've always gone to the top vote getter, or this has come up in the past, then we're not breaking new ground here. That would, you know, probably give the public some confidence. No, this is what we do. This is the playbook we run. It's happened twelve times over the last twenty four years. And this is what we've done eleven out of twelve times or whatever it is, just to be fully transparent. So if somebody doesn't come back and go, wait a minute, how did that happen? So, um, I don't know if another. Twenty eight days or however long it is, our next meeting is going to hurt this thing to marinate for a little while and get it out there. Probably will come to the same conclusion, but I'd love to do it with eyes wide open.
Well, and I can answer some of that. Um, so we've done it one, one or two times since I've been in office. That was also about fifteen months post-election. So we really were kind of at a starting ground for that. To be clear, none of this has to go before public. It is strictly a council appointed and that's, that's a state. Mandate. We're following all of the state, state rules on that. And I think it comes down to. Who can effectively work and represent it. We just have to have a little bit of a bonus point here because we're three months post-election. Which we didn't have before. So you've already got folks that have gone before, ran the campaign, had voter confidence. So. To me, that's kind of a plus that we didn't have the last time that we had to do this. Um, I'm not sure historically. If that's come up before.
I can't speak to historically and honestly, historically. Depends if you like what you did historically or don't like what they did historically. I can just say, you know, we've been unfortunate to do this twice. Um, and so, you know, the first time, Rich and I really had to look into it. And, and so the council just has very wide discretion on this. We, we've gone to the state, we've got them for a collection of people like this with. Uh, Representative Stacey Williams went to the State House and our charter did express it in this case. Our charter says the council shall appoint and fill the seat. And that's it. So you can use any means, methods. It says shall or can or shall. I gotta look back and say if it can or shall, but there, in our essence, they. You can't leave the thing forever, I guess would be the.
I'll add to the, the previous before the last two with Brian Deeper. And he moved out of the district, had to vacate the position and then the council had several debates. Uh, the next meeting appointed Benita Conrad. So that was the, and actually there was a little controversy in that one because it wasn't. A hundred percent one way or the other. Someone stepped out of the room to go to the restroom and the decision was made. So. It was, uh. It was interesting, but that was the previous one before this.
I almost picture an auctioneer in my mind going, go on once, go on twice, all hearts and minds clear.
And I'll, I'll say at our budget meeting on the twenty second, at the end of that meeting, we did have a resident that came up. And I think he must have come in on the tail end of that process and didn't quite understand because he was a little upset under trying to figure out why we didn't just appoint somebody that was next in line. Actually, and that we had the discussion and this is the applicant pool that we were going to start with. He was like, okay. So I think he must have missed that, but. His thought was it's already gone to the public. Fair enough, because we did not have that the last time we had to to open, so.
So I think for me, part of my concern is the time at which we're now. Moving with this, because when we talked about this on the twenty second, the conversation was potentially June first. I went back and re-listened to the video and made sure that my memory wasn't failing me. Um, so I'm just curious. Why we're moving so quickly? Because that was not what was discussed publicly. And that's super important to be transparent in any process. So I, I want it to be explained to me. What's the sense of urgency at this point? Because in my notes, we discussed potentially June first.
I think the June first date came up. Um, if we were having to bring somebody new up to speed, because we did not want to burden town staff with that. However, in this case, and with my recommendation, we've got somebody that's already been a part of this process and who wants to be a part of that process. And I think that is some invaluable. Information. Any else want to add?
Yeah, yeah.
Did I miss? I mean, that's what I had written down.
Thank you, Mayor, for, um, and I believe you followed our instructions where we've recommended that you reach out to the candidates. Because the election was so recent. Um, and, and thank you for pulling up the number and the ballots because we see that. Ian Patrick received a thousand votes in Chris Paul here, thousand thirty eight, so within. So what this tells me is that there's so many residents that came out and voted for these folks. And they were so close, like Ron Smith, thousand ninety four. So really within less than a hundred votes there. Um. That's reason number one. Another reason I know that Rodney is the second. Vote getter. Was also very supportive of Ian and was very respective, respectful of his knowledge and thought that he would be a very good candidate. And I do know that he supported his candidates when he was running. So I feel that. That would also be honoring the people that have voted for Rodney if we do continue that. Um, and nominate Patrick, uh, Mr. Patrick. Um, also, I believe that because he's had four years, um, working in the council and. Going through this budget process year after year, um, I feel like he'd be able to hit the ground running. I don't think he's missed a beat. Um, the other thing is with his. Specific, um, knowledge of architecture, construction, um, how things work. I think he was really instrumental in our last several budget, um. Sessions. So I feel that. We would be fortunate and the citizens, the residents of this town would be fortunate to have Ian Patrick back on the council. And I feel that there is absolutely, um, urgency because we do need experienced people in the budget process where we have two new. Inexperienced council members. Great, but it's just, it, it takes a lot to know what the whole budget process is like. And it really helps that somebody has gone through it four times. Um. So with that, I would like to move to appoint Ian Patrick to the council to replace the Rodney Dillinger seat.
I can add, I don't think, I don't really think that there's a transparency issue. Um, because of the way this was discussed like the last council meeting. And I think everything was kind of laid out on a table that the big issue was bringing on somebody new and bringing them up to speed, not only on town council business, but. Walking them through the budget process. I think that was the mountain that we were looking at. Um, however, I don't see, I don't see that issue with Ian. Um, he's sat here for four years. He doesn't care about the politics. He cares about the talent. Um, so one of the smartest guys I know. The fact that the community didn't support him in the way they voted. Um, I don't think that, I don't, it's not like we're not doing something behind the tales, but. I kind of feel that was the allegation.
No, that's not what I was saying. But what the conversation was. So I shared my understanding of what that conversation was. And you all told me that, that my recollection of that is different. So.
No, I think something made, there was one comment made by June first, but none of us were discussing that as a, a good viable option. I think it's just something that was thrown around.
Yeah, I think June first.
Someone that's experienced.
Somebody new, somebody, somebody we had to bring up the speed. So we used the date June the first that would give us time to do that. Um, but we, I don't think we have that issue of being that, what I'm saying.
I really think too, this is a pivotal year for us for budgeting. Uh, especially with property revivals and everything going on. This, we've got to get this budget right. And I think adding somebody with experiences that Ian has had in the past, um, I think he brings great knowledge to that. I will, I will support that. I would support that as well.
So we thought there's a motion on the floor and, and what I would anticipate, if that motion is followed through, then we would actually do the swearing in at the next council meeting. This is the March twenty third. Did I say that date right? Should have that memorized.
It's March twenty third.
My thing, but is that a reasonable? It's why I like to see that.
For us, we just add it to the agenda. So, uh, depends how much pomp and circumstance that Councilman Patrick would like us to. Uh, renewing, get a horse with balloons, uh, that's his standard fare for the month. But, um, yeah, no, I mean, that's what we, it's very easy for us to add to it. We're ear plucking. Well, last thing I'll say, because I know there's a motion on the table, is. Our hearings are open. Our budget sessions are open. I just want to give this council. You know, a little bit of air cover to say. We aired it out. In fact, we took an extra thirty days. We took our time. And if anything comes up, you had your chance and that we're absolutely on solid ground. I don't know, you guys tell me if that harmed us in any way. I mean. Uh, former Councilman Patrick is here tonight and I'm sure he'll be at the budget meeting. I'm sure he'll plug right in. Our deadline is June. And here we are in March.
There is no deadline.
No, no, no. Our deadline for the budget is June. So if we're counting on his help before June, I mean.
I, I would like, um, as I've stated, I made the motion to appoint Ian Patrick to the seat.
So there's a motion on the floor to invite Ian Patrick to the vacant seat. There's a second by Councilman Price, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Welcome back, Councilman Patrick. We will touch base with you after and do a formal swearing in at the March twenty third of our calendar. Thank you. With that, we'll move into council comments this evening. Forward.
I will also congratulate the cookie company. I put on sixteen pounds. Thanks to our new residents. So, uh, very welcome. And it was, uh, really nice to see the community spirit in there. I went back on Saturday and the place was overrun. So, uh, that's a good thing. Then I went back on Monday and they were catching their breath because they were out of cookies. So. Uh, great to have them on board and welcome aboard. I did enjoy the dinner the other night, uh, with, uh, I'm the mayor and, uh, Latricia. And it was really interesting to hear from the other communities and what they're going through. Some of them were in our county and wrestling with some of the same tax issues that we're wrestling with. And some had a whole other host of problems that we don't have. So, uh, that was very interesting and instructional. Uh, the other thing I gathered from that and I had a couple of conversations today is if you don't ask, you don't get. So I really appreciate Mayor, your advocacy and a lot of the grant money I'm learning came from your work behind the scenes. So. Uh, congratulations for that and other folks who don't get, not our problem. We got it for Harrisburg. So thank you for that. So I, I'm learning a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
I'd just like to give a shout to the fire department, first responders that came out. Uh, I had a friend of mine that was in a wreck out here on forty nine a couple of weeks ago and a dumb lady was transported to the hospital. She was, she was pregnant and, uh, just wanted to kind of update. If you haven't heard, she's out of the hospital. The baby's fine. Everybody's doing well. So thank you guys for quick response and, uh, and taking care of that. I know we've had several accidents on forty nine. Especially right out front of Lowe's Foods, um, at that intersection. So, uh, just want to say thank you guys. It was, it was awesome. Everybody's doing well.
Um, I'll just say, we do have, um, Julia Taylor, who was a two thousand twenty one graduate from Hager Ridge High School. She was the second vice chair for the council. She's now the student body president at UNC Chapel Hill. And, um, it is social worker appreciation month and there are quite a few of us in Harrisburg. So. Uh, it's our month. Let's enjoy it. And also I'm curious for the budget workshops. Is there any way to put those as a shortcut on the page where our regular council meetings are? I've gotten a couple of emails about the ease of access to being able to find, like the link for the, no.
The live link or the recording? Uh, page of the meetings here to follow.
And that's coming. I'm gonna put that on my action.
Just don't make eye contact with Casey.
Some recorded budget links. Any other council comments?
What? I'm sorry. I already used my time, but I'm gonna use one more time. There was a group from, uh, Harrisburg, mainly Harrisburg, that just got back from Mexico. Building some houses down there and I followed along on TikTok. And it was amazing to see your friends and neighbors put up two houses in less than four days. I think they packed up pickup trucks and put their hammers and nails and went down there. And really made a difference and changed lives in Mexico. So congratulations to that.
Yeah, it's about fifty from the area, families, kids. It was pretty impressive to see.
Good group.
Yes, they are.
Any other council comments before we move on?
Okay, well, we're gonna go quick this evening because we do not have any public hearings and we do not have any. So first up underneath business is consideration of capital authorization. For the budget order, the deputy vehicles, talk about these deputy vehicles for a while. Thanks for joining us again, Brian.
Sure, I'm here on behalf of Captain Lee Smith. I get into vehicles. So, um, as you know, um. So as you know, as we go through the project record each month, we have seven or eight vehicles on the current year list that we're still trying to get a hold of that have been ordered. They've, excuse me, they pulled orders, like Ford has pulled the order. We resubmitted those. So we're working on the current year vehicles. And what we want to do is avoid this situation as we head into next year, while we're hopefully expanding our law enforcement fleet. So here's a look at where we currently sit fiscal year 2024 with 25 deputy personnel. Two of those are county funded, so 23, the responsibility of the town. The plan is to expand that by four positions for fiscal year 2025, still with two being supported by the county to take our number to 27. So the exact positions that will get approved are subject to, to your approval during the budget process. But we know that we'll have four deputies coming online that require a vehicle. So that leads us to the, the four vehicles that are being requested tonight. We also have two scheduled replacements as just part of our, our normal turnover of vehicles. And then we had one vehicle that was totaled in December that also needs to be replaced. So that brings us to seven. Now on that one, we got to lock in $9,000 of insurance proceeds to help us with the purchase of that new vehicle. But our request tonight is for seven deputy vehicles that will actually be placed in service sometime in the next fiscal year. The important thing here is that Ford has opened up their ordering portal as of this month. And so we do have a short window to get those orders in. If we miss that, there could be another 12 to 18 months, see if we're going with Ford. There were other options. We've gone to Dodge Row in the past and that is not, that has not been a good move for us in terms of maintenance and repair and performance. So we'd like to stick with Ford and this will help us stay with Ford across the entire fleet. So the vehicle costs, these come from Tewars County as the county actually purchases the vehicle, gets it outfitted, placed in service. And then we reverse the county for those vehicles. So you can see the base vehicle cost is at about 60,000, another 16,000 in garage equipment and labor coming from the county. The 76,000 on the base vehicle, another 7,200 in additional equipment to outfit that vehicle. About 1,000 in medical supplies and other miscellaneous supplies to bring the total vehicle cost to just over 84,000. So we have rounded that for any unknowns to about 85,000 per vehicle, which gives us a total of 595,000 for seven vehicles for the fiscal year 2025 budget. But this authorization tonight allows us to place that order. We of course won't pay for these until they actually come in. That is noted against the insurance proceeds that we received on that one vehicle for 586 is our total cash outflow. So with that, the recommended motion, if you approve tonight, is to approve the capital outlay authorization and the related fiscal year 2024 budget ordinance amendments for the purchase of seven deputy vehicles. And I am glad to answer any questions.
So Brian, the last time we went through this exercise, Ford took our orders, but then I thought we got shut out.
And then they actually canceled all of those.
And, and I'm wondering how many other municipalities went through the same thing. So are we going to be in the same type situation? Pray and hope that we get something or do we have a better understanding that we'll get something?
He has a little more confidence in this round of orders, especially because we were going with a hybrid last time. And this time we're going with F-150s and a couple that are not hybrids. And so he feels a lot better about actually placing this order and Ford sticking to it. But at the same time, they have the ability to just cancel those orders at least.
Can I tell you why they canceled?
They, they stated it was a chip shortage. And so they had everything ready and then had to cancel on thousands of, of orders.
Just wanted to see if we could research that before we order.
Something with the chip that goes into the hybrid that's not required to be entered.
I had discussed the, the new orders with Captain Lisa related to that. They don't have the same, the same issue with this order, which is why we reopened it. They really just kind of closed it off until they solved that issue. Now that doesn't mean they're not lying, right? I mean, that's, that's always a possibility that they decided to be available. But the, the folks that are doing the ordering for us are a lot more optimistic than the last time.
These are for positions that were already approved.
Yes, when we did, we did a full bill. These aren't anything above beyond that. And two of them are existing positions, so there is vehicles that are, that meet their length of service or mileage requirements. So they're up for replacement and then get the Ford.
So that you, as you said, the payout's not until the automatic bills are received.
Correct. So how many of these are incremental and how many of these are replacement?
There's four for the new positions that'll be out next year. There's two just regular turnover of vehicles and there's one that was totaled in December.
Okay, we got 9,000 for the one. How's the return on the ones that were retired? I recently bought a truck and it's outrageous. So we're getting a few more bucks.
We're getting really good prices on everything that we surplus and we do still own all these vehicles. So on some of these, we've probably been in the, we're probably in the 10 to $15,000 range on some of these.
And what's the mileage on these?
Usually about 75,000, I want to say, in that range, 75 to 80,000.
He's about six years old and about 75,000 dollars.
And has probably three times that equivalent on the engine running, because these, they don't shut these cars. The mileage doesn't reflect, and people know that, but they're bidding on police receptors that there's a lot more hours on the vehicle than there are lots.
Previously, we went longer, but then wear and tear.
Upside down.
Yeah, and we moved same program that the county has on, as far as wear, tear and mileage and years.
How many of these are diesel? Any of these, I saw diesel in either, none of these. That's all on the fire stuff.
Right.
Questions for Brian? With that, is there a motion to approve the capital outlay authorization and related fiscal year 2024 budget ordinance amendments for the seven deputy vehicles as presented this evening?
Question stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you, Brian. Next up, we have consideration of the appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And we've got Kenny Spina with us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Here tonight for your consideration of the appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board. A little history first, maybe a couple of new members, just to get you off the day. Harrisburg Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is a board consisting of seven Harrisburg residents with two-year terms. Those terms are staggered to end every other year. We have four one year, three the next. And this year, four terms are ending on June 30th with a 30-day application process for filling those seats to begin on April 1st. There is a vacancy though, and it's created when Councilman Fall, who was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Board in August 23, was elected to the council as best of them. And he was appointed to fill Mike Fevenin's unexpired term when Mike was appointed to town council in January 23. It's apparent that if you want to get on council, you join the advisory board. That term will expire at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, at which time you see we'll come open for appointment. As I stated earlier, the applications for appointment, two to four open seats starting in July would be advertised on April 1st, but all applications due by April 30th. The current vacancy has three plus, well, not three plus months left on that term. And when consulted the, at a previous meeting, the advisory board felt it important to appoint somebody given the master plan timeline and the activities and events associated with the Parks and Recreation Program. In August 23, there were four quality candidates for the advisory board at vacancy. Given the quality of the candidates and the short term to be served, we decided to re-interview the next qualified candidate from the August applications engaged their interest in serving. The candidate that we interviewed, his info, his name is Zach Bowman. And he lives on Hickory Hollow Court, employed by Wells Fargo as a financial crime specialist, which is in our programs. He also serves as a community voice governor. He's a new member of the Harrisburg community. He's been here a little over two years, I believe. He wants to be more involved in bettering his new home and growing community. He has a good feel for the vision of the Parks and Recreation Program. And he looks forward to helping Harrisburg to be a place to live, grow and work. Zach was interviewed by Parks Liaison, Council Parks Liaison, Chris Fall and myself on February 26th. He was also interviewed last August by, at that time, Council Liaison Hotel. During the interview, Zach was notified that if he was appointed, he would be filling a short term that would end on June 30th. Then if it happened to apply for reappointment, if he had desired, enabled, yes, to continue serving another term. And Zach did state at the time of the interview, he will certainly consider reapplying for that appointment. In applying conclusion of the interview, Councilmember Fall and myself both felt that Zach would be a qualified candidate, would share a strong common vision with current advisory board members. And so with that, the recommendation is that Zach is a strong advocate for community parks and programs. Facilities would be a good fit on the advisory board. It is because of this that Councilman Fall and town staff both strongly recommend to the town council to approve his appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And that motion is up there stated. If you guys still choose to go forward with that, I answered any questions about the process or Zach or anything else.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any questions for Jim?
I can add a little color. He's very impressive and I think we almost get a two for one, because his wife is very involved in the program and they're about creating experiences as much as they are about scheduling ballparks and all that. So he's very impressive, would be lucky to have him.
Thank you. There's several questions for Jim. Is there a motion to appoint Zach Bowman to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board effective March 12th or through the June 30th?
Just starting tomorrow through June.
Is there a motion on the floor as presented?
Question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Get to your pitch, Janet. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Action items this evening? I just highlighted grant updates on the road improvement, how to communicate those. Jeremiah speaking earlier, I just want to make sure that I've got that on the agenda so that those come available. And then for Latricia's comment about the budget recordings, to making sure that that is updated, which sounds like that's happening next week. Did you have anything else under action items?
I think we already addressed this, but I have to look at the quick button for budget billing and where that falls. So I think it was already taken care of, but I'll double check on that. Those are the three that I have there.
Okay, great. Thank you. We do have a need for a quick closed session this evening to discuss a real estate acquisition and litigation. So with that, is there a motion to move into closed session? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. We will move into closed session and back. Thank you. We have just come back from closed session and with no further business on the agenda this evening, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.